Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any citizens' comments this evening? Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'll be mindful of my time. I'm coming here tonight to speak, I was here last time, to speak about the position to continue orchestra within our higher grades because that seemed to have dropped. And I just want to share with you a petition that we had go around. It was from change.org. This petition has, you're just gonna see names and addresses from many people in our Auburn community, and it's over 100 names. But I want you to keep in mind that those are parent names, and so for a person like myself that has four children, that could very easily be 400 to 500 names. I wanted to speak about if we were to move forward and hire a position for orchestra. It's logical to have a part-time position, and maybe even a part-time plus benefits, like a .6. I just think that while that's logical, it could also be a very tricky and detrimental decision because we've been very fortunate where Ms. Garo started out as a part-time plus benefits music teacher. And she has given more than enough time and commitment and heart. We have many teachers that have done like a lot of this. We even have teachers coming from Connecticut that have enrolled their own children in our schools because Auburn is just that great. If we hire a position for the part-time plus benefits, you're looking at hiring a person that has a very unique expertise, somebody that's orchestra experience, and that could be very tricky to find. This person, if we're hiring them part-time, they're gonna have to have another type of job to then supplement their income. And we might see a lot of turnover in this position. And so if we're trying to build a program and build orchestra, to have turnover in this position will be very tricky and difficult for the students to build a bond and also for the other music teachers to have that bond formed. And then also to, like what we're intending to do is to grow our program. So while it is logical for us to hire a part-time position right now, I don't want this to then be dropped and just kinda go years and years with having the part-time position, but to keep our eyes set on the future and what is our future goals, and to maybe increase that as time goes on and to look at the longevity and the greatness of, you know, what we're trying to bring to Auburn schools. Thank you for your time.
Welcome. Any comments, questions? Okay, we now move on to special recognitions.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we would like to lead off this evening's meeting with the special recognitions. As many people noticed, and unfortunately so, Mark Blazus, beloved teacher, scientist, writer, sportsman, and bird enthusiast, passed away on November the 17th, 2021. Mark dedicated over 40 years to the students of Auburn as an educator and later as a tour facilitator, leading many of our students and family members to his beloved Ecuador. He oversaw numerous expeditions to Ecuador during his time with us in Auburn, as well as the Amazon. It was a trip that everyone always looked forward to. Over the years, he brought 24 medical teams to help the Kishwa in the rainforest along the Napo River. And for this, he and his wife Helen were awarded the American Red Cross Hometown Hero Award. His son Matthew said it best, "We've lost a true hero" with the passing of Mark Blazus. So we could have a moment of silence for Mark. Thank you. And our condolences to Blazus' family.
I would now seek approval for the minutes of 12:12.
Make the motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Mrs. Vog. Thank you. And we have no student representatives report this evening, so I will turn it over to the superintendent for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we do every meeting, we start off with the COVID update this week. We've had 10 cases on Monday. We've had nine cases on Tuesday, five cases on Wednesday. Seemingly, the case count is up and down here and there, but for the most part, we're seeing increased cases in buildings, not to be, you know, not a surprise based on what we're seeing outside in society. So again, as I've said in numerous meetings, we continue to keep our eyes on that. We continue to do what we can inside of buildings to mitigate exposure between students and staff. And, you know, here's to hoping that the holiday season is not a rough one, or at least as rough as it was last year. So, and again, test and stay has been critical in our ability to keep our schools open. So thank you to OMA Healthcare and to Dr. Chamberlain and our nursing staff for coordinating, and Dr. McCrillis for volunteering her time with her students to help us keep our kids in school. So moving on to this evening, tonight is our FY23 budget kickoff. Tonight will be the first part of our FY23 budget kickoff. We will have the second part on January the 5th, where we will talk more about actual numbers. And then we will, as a, well, you as a committee, as it's your budget, we will adopt the draft budget to send forward to the town to meet the town charter, which is the second Monday in January. Tonight, we have with us our stellar administrative team. They, as they do every year, they're going to share with you some of their accomplishments this year, and even in spite of COVID, what they are looking to accomplish next year. And anything that is up or down in their budget lines, as well as any potential new positions that have been added for consideration. For anybody watching at home, the budget packets, they are online on auburn.k12.us. And you can find them under the school committee date of December the 15th. So you can follow along at home. It's hard to toggle between speakers and presentations. So as we always do here in Auburn, our discussions and decisions regarding our budgets are based on our mission, vision, and core values. Our mission, just as a reminder, is strengthening connections through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Our vision is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. And we have shared core values based on student-centered decision-making, high expectations for all, all environments are safe and respectful, responding to needs based on data, equitable opportunities for all, and always being dedicated to improvement. So as we roll into fiscal year '23, we know COVID has not gone away, as we had hoped. I think we all thought in June that we were gonna come back to a much more normal school experience in the fall. That has been anything but. We're still responding to COVID and educating students in person at the same time. And I would think I could make the argument, along with my colleagues, that this year is more difficult than last year as it relates to, you know, the educational operation. We anticipate continuing to deal with COVID for the foreseeable future and the academic and psychological impacts on our kids. And tonight, like I said, you'll see central office administrators, department heads, and principals presenting what they expect to accomplish this year and next based on what we know at this point. As we go into fiscal year '23, it could be a lean budget year again. We do not have the town or the state numbers at this point. Last year, we had at least town numbers to deal with. We don't have those from the town at this time. Our classroom supply lines are mostly level-funded. You'll see some slight variances among those lines, and people will address them in their presentations. And there are new positions that you will hear. And these new positions are based on the basis of, could be required, proposed for student safety or related to growth of a program. You will hear about a new position in music. You will hear about two new positions in athletics, a preschool ABA, and the potential for need for two LPNs to service our, some students we may have coming in. And as always, when we talk about budget, we know that an emergent need could come in at any time and change the scope and landscape of the process. So as we did last year, we have presentations. Dr. Chamberlain will kick off, followed by Mrs. Reedy, Mr. Fahey, Mr. Bouvier, Ms. Bailey, Ms. Garo. Mr. Davis is in attendance as the administrator of the hockey game tonight, so Mr. DeLongchamp will fill in for him. Mrs. Mahan and Mrs. Stanek will deliver Bryn Mawr and Packet Hogs information, followed by Dr. Lopez, Mr. Desto, and then Mr. DeLongchamp will bring up the tail end for Auburn High School. So with no further ado, Dr. Chamberlain, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Happy to be here. Nice to see all of you and to be here with my colleagues. So it's great to have everyone around. I'll report out tonight on teaching, learning, and curriculum along with the Auburn Integrated Preschool, of which I'm still also the principal there. So when we look at our accomplishments for this year, and I've spoken about this many times, but every staff member in the district will complete two and a half days of training in Universal Design for Learning. What I'm hoping is that through this training, we're going to be able to provide all students opportunities to have choice in their learning and voice in how they express their learning. So a new approach to differentiated instruction, and one that we're hoping will really help elevate the engagement of our students. Through that program, 11 coaches across the district will be trained. They're going every month for training in that because we are committed to building sustainable professional development that sticks with the district and makes a difference for kids. We've provided principals and teaching staff with information related to Desi's Acceleration Roadmap that really encourages us to provide the intervention and remediation that kids need, given the learning loss they've experienced because of the pandemic. But doing that in parallel with grade-level instruction, because what we know is if that kids miss out on another grade, another year of grade-level instruction, the gap continues to widen. And we're working really hard to make sure that that doesn't happen. We are heading toward the end of the Equity Audit that began this past summer, looking at our district through a data-informed lens along with multiple focus groups to really determine areas where we can improve to ensure that all kids receive an equitable experience in the Auburn Public Schools, regardless of race, gender, or whatever the descriptor may be. So we're getting to the point that come January, February, we may have a preliminary report on what we found and something that can help to drive our strategic planning. So we're very excited about that. The move to having all of our preschools at Auburn High School has really helped to create a cohesive team. It's been great for the teachers and the staff, where they can meet regularly, they can collaborate, they can share staff, and it's been exciting to have them all together. This year, we welcomed back 57 full-day preschool students along with 52 half-day students. It is a very busy place. I continue to work on safety protocols and procedures through what we hear from Desi, along with my collaboration with the Auburn Board of Health and our school nurses. I just have to take a moment to thank our school nurses for what they've done for our district. The hard work, their collaboration, their dedication, their seemingly never-ending stream of patients that they have for students and for staff and for the ever-changing requirements that we've met. They've done an amazing job. They're a big contributing factor to our test-and-stay program. Even though they don't facilitate it, they have to identify our close contacts, right? So they have to have kind of a hand in that. And they've just been amazing. Along with the Auburn Board of Health, who we continue to collaborate with, we're hoping this coming Wednesday, December 22nd, we're going to be able to offer a vaccination clinic for children aged 5 to 11 who are recently eligible to be vaccinated. Ms. McCrillis is also helping facilitate that. But it will be on the 22nd from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Auburn High School. Formal information will go out tomorrow. We're still working on some of the logistics, but the date has been selected. And just to go back to test and stay, we've conducted nearly 4,000 tests, 2,000 of those since the beginning of December. So it's been very, very busy, but it's helped to keep a lot of kids in school and kids who maybe shouldn't have been in school because they, you know, we did have some tests positive, we were able to identify so that we could mitigate that spread. So it's really worked well for us. As we look forward to next year, we're gonna continue with our commitment to Universal Design for Learning. This is a three-year commitment. We will be implementing the recommendations from the APS Equity Audit to be sure that all kids receive what they need to be successful. We're going to look down, go down the professional development road related to equity, inclusion, social justice, and cultural competency, which is all going to tie to the information we've received from this audit. Part of that is going to be to build a system that more regularly gathers feedback from our stakeholders, whether it's students, staff, families, to make sure that all voices are heard as we begin, continue to drive the district forward. Along with creating a data structure that makes sure that we all know where we're at, how are all of our kids doing? Not only the kids in our classrooms, but the kids in the district. The more information you have related to that, the more likely you are to influence how kids do. We'll be looking through, at all of our teaching materials through that social justice lens for equity that avoids stereotypes and that type of thing. We'll ensure there's a robust RTI model at all schools so that students get what they need related to that remediation, but grade-level learning as well. Social-emotional learning and screening will continue, as it has this year, and will continue into next year along with continuing to build that multi-level tier of support so that we respond to the kids with what they need related to social-emotional learning and mental health. Bright programming will continue to develop at Auburn High School, the middle school in Swanson Road. And as always, we look to build a better preschool experience for our most young, our youngest students. I don't have any budget changes to share with you this evening, except for the one request for a new ABA at the preschool to meet the needs of our youngest students. When I look back at the data in the 2017-18 school year, we had 21 students over the course of the year that were identified as needing special education services. This year, as of today, we already have 28 students this school year. And we're finding increasing needs related to each of those students. So I think it would be, you know, a well-used position. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chamberlain. Mrs. Reedy, Director of Pupil Services?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I am very happy to be here this evening to highlight some of the, some of the expected accomplishments of the Pupil Services Department. We have established new programming at Auburn Middle School for students with autism that's highly comprehensive and specialized for those students. We also recognize the enormous needs of students of all ages around mental health. At Swanson Road, we have implemented programming called the Bright Program to support those students both in the general education classroom and out of the classroom. And this spring, we're planning to once again hold our Special Olympics Unified School Game, School Day Games. That was put on hold a few years back because of COVID. So the planning is happening, and we're very excited to be able to do that this year. This coming February, we'll be hosting the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as they'll be coming to Auburn to perform a review of our special education and civil rights compliance within the district. And moving forward to fiscal year '23, we do expect to continue reviewing all of our special education programs across all ages and across all disabilities to ensure that we continue to have strong and comprehensive programs in place for all of our students. We'll also continue with that Universal Design for Learning professional development to reduce those barriers to instruction to all students. And in order to continue to be a unified champion school district as Auburn has been found by Special Olympics, we're going to enhance our unified physical education programming and also our inclusive opportunities across the district. At this time, I have no changes to the Pupil Services budget for next year.
Thank you, Mrs. Reedy. Mr. Fahey, Director of Facilities, good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hanfield. Good evening, everybody. Physical plant operation accomplishments for, for last year. We've done, we've completed the main switchgear repair at Auburn High School. We resurfaced five outdoor tennis courts and one basketball court this past summer at the high school. We completed Phase 1 of the sprinkler upgrade system at Bryn Mawr School. We installed, as we all know, the ionization units for air quality in each classroom district-wide. We, we also, at the intermediate school, we resurfaced the modular classroom roof over the summer. We, again, at Swanson Road, we completed two HVAC units in the gym. We replaced those with green community funding, as well as that capital program. We also did some flooring upgrades at the intermediate school, the Packet Hogs as well. So again, it was a busy year, as usual. And this year, we plan to do the exact same, keep it rolling. We plan on HVAC upgrades at the high school, continuing flooring upgrade district-wide. We're gonna complete the electrical service at Bryn Mawr School. We already started that this past year. We'll complete the sprinkler project at Bryn Mawr. It was done in multiple phases due to the fact that budgets come in so high. And we also plan on doing some parking lot resurfacing at Bryn Mawr. So next year is gonna be the year of Bryn Mawr School. And well deserved. And we have tank, oil tank replacements scheduled to get replaced at the intermediate school as well. So again, it will be a busy year, as usual. A physical plant operation increases primarily is due to COVID cleaning. As you'll see in the slides, you'll see an increase of $4,125 at the high school. You'll see a slight increase to the middle school, $1,875. $2,125 at the Swanson Road Intermediate School. Packet Hogs went up to $1,375. Bryn Mawr, you're gonna see a big jump, not only because we're doing all the work this year, but what we've done over the years, we've had, what's the saying, you steal from Peter to pay Paul. So what we do is we take things from other schools and kind of make everything happen in our budget. But this way here, we want to keep everything cost-neutral across the district. So you'll see an increase there of $3,375. And a central administration bumping that up, $250. We also added $10,000 in the field maintenance account at the high school with an offset to avoid any increases. And that will also cover our tick and mosquito control district-wide. It will also service our IPM guidelines, which does our organic fertilization programs at the high school and also at the, at the new middle school. And we also added in $45,000 for filters and supply replacement for the ionization units that we purchased last year along with the town with an offset of zero increase to the budget. So that's it. I thank you very much for your time. And any questions, please let me know.
I just wanted to point out real quick through the chair, the $45,000 for the filters for the bipolar ionization units, if you recall when we talked about those when we first purchased them, the filters inside of them are good for two years. So every two years, we have to replace all of the filters. So that's a cost that you may, you won't see next year necessarily, but you would see every, every two years, yeah. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Mr. Fahey. Mr. Bouvier.
Good evening.
Land of Technology.
Good evening, and thanks for inviting us to do this. This year's accomplishments were primarily centered around both iPads and infrastructure, which are two of our major technology initiatives that we have to deal with every year. This year, we moved to a full 1:1 K to 12. We had sort of done it last year due to COVID, sending devices home with, with all of our students. This year, we moved to a cart-based system, K to 5, where all the students have their own iPad, but they remain in school. And 6 to 12 continue to take their iPads home as they have in the past. This involved purchasing some new iPads to replace some older ones that would no longer meet our needs. All sixth-grade students receive new iPads, and some kindergarten students will be receiving new iPads when they ever arrive. We have had some supply chain issues. We also put in place a new iPad management system, which we are excited about, and we hope our teachers are very excited about as well. We have always had a system to manage our iPads, but the new one, which is made by the same company but more designed to be implemented in schools, allows our teachers greater control over the iPads in front of them. That means that they have the ability to lock students into a single app, to lock students into a series of webpages, a single webpage, or to completely disable the iPad so that students are not distracted and are hopefully paying attention to the teacher instead of their device when they're not supposed to. So we're excited about that as well. We did a lot for infrastructure this year. We started with a new internet connection. We, it's basically the same size, but it's a new provider, mostly based to the, on the fact that our previous one was no longer on the state bid list. But we also added a secondary internet connection. It never had in the district before. We put in a smaller connection equestery with the intent of having a location that we could go to in the event that our primary connection failed. All of our data is now kept in the cloud through Power School, through School G, through the ESPED, oh, not ESPED, through the Special Ed, through Power School, and through the nursing software. So we felt that if the district was entirely offline, that would put us in a very bad place and brought in that secondary connection, knowing that in the event that the first one was down, we can get into our data at West Street, especially since most of our emergency data is there. So that was a big step. We also upgraded our firewall. Those need to be replaced every four, five, six years, depending on how much you're going, to keep up with the security patches and updates. And pretty much once they get old, they, they put the district in, in a position where we could get hacked or something like that. So we replaced our firewall. We upgraded our network servers and our virtual environment. Our servers were definitely getting older and we're getting slow, so those were replaced. We are in process of upgrading the switches at Swanson Road and the wireless access points, which are also somewhere in the country, I think, but not in Auburn yet. We are, we are slowly trying to get Swanson upgraded, like many of our other schools. But again, supply chain issues have, have hit us, and our access points are not currently with us. We know the district needs a strong infrastructure. We know the schools need updated devices and fast access to resources, and that our teachers need those tools so that our students can utilize that. So we really be focused on that. As we look to next year, it's a lot more infrastructure upgrades. We really want to upgrade the network switches at Auburn High School. Hopefully, through an E-RAY project, those switches in most of the closets are the same age as the building, which is ancient for, for technology. They're, they were, they're still, they still function, but they're not as robust as they could be. So we're, we're looking to do that. We're looking to upgrade the wireless network at Auburn Middle School. Again, those access points are as old as that building, and a six-year is a long time of wireless. It's a technology that moves quick. So we would like to move those forward. Well, supporting student data privacy across all of our networking applications is a focus of ours. And as we bring in new applications and software, we want to make sure that we are respecting the privacy of all of our users. We really would like to expand the, our management system to parents to give them more control of the devices when the devices are at their own house, if not in school. We plan to redesign our district website. We're looking at some alternative vendors or potentially continuing the same one, but we're changing the look. Continuing to support accessibility in technology across all of our students as that need comes up. That's been an increasing need of our students. We have a lot of technology. It can support a lot of the It can support a lot of the students that need some, some special assistance, and we, we do what we can to, to make sure they have that. As you look at the increases, unfortunately, my budget does continue to go up. District supplies went up from 10,000 to 17,000. That, we have a lot more iPads in use right now. We have a lot more iPads that we have to support with cables and chargers and broken cases replaced, and we also have a lot of technology needs around the system that, that are, we can't necessarily plan for. They'll, they'll come up when the need arises, and we have to be preparing and have the resources to provide those students with what they need. Our district-wide contracted computer services has gone up. That's related to the, the secondary internet connection, which we feel is really important, but it's also related to the fact that most of what we deal with in contracted services and prior infrastructure is based on the number of users that we have, and we continue to, continue to grow with that. It feels like we're adding user accounts every day. As we get more people using devices and more devices in district, a lot of those costs will rise accordingly. And district-wide computer software, this product is the largest that you see there. It includes all software licenses for the entire district, so it's not just necessarily programs that, that I'm managing. It could be programs in, in Special Ed or in a, in a department. So, they all fall under, under my budget so that we can ensure that they all align with what we have for technology and, and our goals. We've seen some increases due to diagnostic and instructional programs, a lot of these related to reading and path. Some of them that were initially brought in with grants that, that we need to continue in order to meet the needs of our students. Some of, a lot of this is COVID-related, students coming back with, with some gaps that need to be diagnosed and, and addressed. Our online student registration system had previously been free for the past three years, but now we have to pay for it as part of the agreement that we put in place when we signed it. That registration system allows parents to register their students online rather than paperwork, and has been a real nice program for us, so we're excited to continue to use it, but unfortunately, we're going to have to start paying for that, and that, again, is a perpugal expenditure. So, our costs rise and fall with student enrollment and also with the number of devices in district, so, so unfortunately, we have a little bit of increase this year, but it's also important to know that all of the programs and licenses that we do ask for are annually reviewed by Dr. Chamberlain and myself, so that we can make sure that what we have is what we need, and that if there's anything that is not being used, and the data shows that it's not being, you know, used enough or effectively, we, we tend to drop those programs as well. So, thank you for your continued support of technology, and, again, if you have any questions, feel free.
Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Mrs. Bailey and Mrs. Garrow, for Fine Arts, you're up next.
Thank you, Dr. Hanfield. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to see all of you this evening. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about our accomplishments for FY '22. Despite COVID and all of the challenges that we've had over the past, well, I guess it's almost two years at this point, we've been able to continue to provide meaningful and relevant experiences in general music and ensemble performances. As a matter of fact, our marching band returned to full competition and did their show, "We Will Rock You," on our home field, which was wonderful, September 25th. At Ampechog and Brenmore and Swanson Road, we will be presenting our annual holiday winter programs, this time via digital media and video recording, and we'll be sharing that with families in all of our grades, K through five. Our new art teacher, Jenna Bailey, at Ampechog and Brenmore, is working in conjunction with Amanda Green, our physical education teacher, and they have begun Wellness Wednesdays to promote more social, emotional learning at our K through two level. We also have a new PBIS initiative at Ampechog and Brenmore, which is our PBIS drum club and glove, and we have that for our students all the way K through two at both schools, kindergarten and first grade at Ampechog. The choruses at both the middle and high school film their trimester one concerts, and really are hoping to invite audience members back as protocols will allow in the future. And an in-person concert was held on the 30th of November with our chamber singers and our concert band. We will have our concert band and chamber choir competing in the MICA festival in the spring. Our Swiss string program is only grades three and four this year, but we do have over 110 students participating in those grades. Our Swanson Road band has 50-plus students, our grade five students, and they are participating in band and group lessons this year. The high school will be performing a musical with the middle school, Newsies. I believe that's coming up this spring. We also have additional collaborations with the Worcester Youth Orchestra and with the Worcester Arts Museum for Youth Art Month in, I believe that's March. We also have reintroduced and expanded, and we are growing our private lesson program. We have over 60 students participating currently. In the spring, we hope to have a revised festival of the art stem and wellness, and we really would like to explore some new venues and new ways to use the high school to be able to expand our footprint and be able to have traffic flow better this, this coming spring. We also will be having the return of our district traveling art exhibit, which will go from school to school and show off student form, and a new use of technology for online ticket, ticket sales and screaming and butterflies. Now, Mrs. Bailey, Miss Bailey.
Hi. Again, thank you all so much for your support. We're incredibly, incredibly grateful. We're grateful to the leadership team. We're grateful to all of you, as school committee members, for providing us with the resources. We're one of the few schools that was able to keep music alive through remote, through hybrid. We had a fully virtual musical last year. We're so excited. We had over 55 students audition for Newsies, so, again, thank you for your support of that. In fiscal year '23, we are going to be continuing to revise the high school music technology electives to allow for better connections with students with units on beat making, electronic music composition, game design, and songwriting. We have new extracurricular competitive opportunities for the middle school and high school students with winter color guard and indoor percussion. We are looking to expand the string program into the middle school with a .6 position. We would also love to see a return of the middle school drama program. We're also looking to build the extracurricular chorus for the fifth grade string, ah, sorry, fifth grade students at Swanson Road School. We are hoping to rebuild fame to, they're currently disbanded as a result of COVID and not being able to find new leadership to step up, but we're looking at ways to re-energize and rebuild fame so that we have a booster organization. The Trium Music Honor Society students, we are hoping to collaborate with our Swiss and middle school students to provide tutoring and support, and we are also looking to start a United Sound chapter to complement all of the wonderful things with our unified program. So, United Sound provides musical performance opportunities to students with disabilities through peer mentorship. The only change to our budget, since we no longer require paper and envelopes, and we've been moving all of our correspondence electronically, we would like to move the fine arts office supplies to equipment repair and maintenance so that we can better meet the needs for COVID cleaning, new mouthpieces, and things like that. So, again, thank you very much for your support of our programs, and we, if you have any questions, we're happy to, to discuss.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bailey. Thank you, Mrs. Garrow. As I said earlier, Mr. Davis is a site administrator at hockey game tonight, so Mr. DeLongchamp will address the athletic portion.
Good evening, everyone. Not only am I excited to speak about the importance of our athletic accomplishments, I think after the last two years, it's never been so apparent how important is our athletic programs as well as our fine arts and our clubs and activities are to our students. Just seeing us put ourselves back together again over the last year, you can see how much it's almost revitalized, us students with increased participation almost in all areas. With that being said, our accomplishments from last year, we were able to maintain the excellence of our unified basketball and track programs, even despite some of the protocols due to COVID. Again, despite the challenges, we were able to distribute over $1,600 in scholarships, five $200 scholarships from our Auburn High School Leadership Group, and two $300 scholarships from the Edvardi Memorial Scholarship to members of the class of 2021. Our track team was able to compete in a shortened season. Our leadership team, which consists of student athletes, players, band, chorus members, they were able to get back to the community again, and they did this in, with community service like gathering, snow shoveling, and, and other, in other ways to impact the community. Our unified basketball, football, cheerleading, and indoor track all played during the Fall Two season. That was the wedge season that was played in the spring. Our boys varsity baseball competed in the Central Mass Tournament, so like our, like, I'd say like a district tournament, like playoffs. We, you know, Mr. Davis worked hard with the committee to find a long-term opponent for our Thanksgiving Day football game, and that was against Lester High School, and I want to say that we had our first win with this new tradition, which was fantastic. We continue to emphasize a caring, compassionate, safe environment that centers around integrity and sportsmanship. Something that's particularly, was particularly great, just a couple of weeks ago, our leadership team hosted the new MIA Executive Director, Dr. Robert Baldwin, and he came in to talk to our leadership students in regards to some of their participation in the community, as well as to talk about ways to work with our diversity, equity, inclusion awareness. So, the MIA through the winter season has started diversity training for all of its athletes. So, he was able to come in and speak to the kids, and that was great for him to actually take the time to come out in person to talk to the group. So, those are some accomplishments of 2022. Going forward to 2023, we are working on trying to figure out ways to engage our community in regards to getting our senior citizens more involved with athletic programs, not necessarily to play these games, but to come and watch and, and support. Explore options to host presentations and seminars for our student athletes regarding what may be available to them at the next level, as well to learn the life lessons from participating in interscholastic athletics. Create a campaign in conjunction with the Guardians Department to urge student athletes to apply for, for any and all scholarships, both academic and athletic, available to them, to just help them gain any, any kind of support. Find ways to increase student involvement, both as participants and partners, just whether it's to cheer on your team or to, to help a team in some capacity. I think it's been great, like I mentioned, over the past, over the past five or six months, the return of much more, I won't say it's the same, but much more traditional athletic seasons, and to partner with Mr. Desto in the middle school with some of our teams, and to also see the middle school teams flourish in addition. We are working on establishing and growing our unified program at the middle school level, too, and we have two new positions, two assistant golf coaches, one for the fall season and one for the spring season, to support, to support those teams. In regards to budget changes, I think you see that there's a slight change, or more than a slight change, with transportation, just because of fuel cost increases. I think you see that there's a little bit of increase with ice time, and then you see the slight increase with the overall game management and getting people to support the games. I think everything else on that page is pretty much status quo. A little, a slight increase with uniform costs, just so we can keep up with the uniform distribution lists, and I think that's, I think that's all the increases I see. Is there any questions?
Seeing none.
Thank you, Mr. DeLongchamp. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is Mrs. Mahan and Mrs. Stanek, who will deliver Brenmore Elementary and Ampechog Elementary Schools' accomplishments and budgets.
Thank you, Dr. Hanfield. Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here with all of you tonight. I'd like to share with you many accomplishments that Brenmore and Ampechog have had and will have over the school year. This year, principals have been attending monthly Universal Design for Learning training in order to support our buildings with their three-year initiative. There are two coaches in each of our buildings that attend monthly trainings. Mrs. Stanek and I have scheduled additional support with our district coach to work with staff during PLCs and faculty meetings. We are so excited to be in person this year and have been able to reinstate co-teaching within our classrooms. At this time, a push-in intervention block is being utilized. Small groups focus on specific student needs to accelerate learning for all. Mrs. LeBretton has resumed her role as our media technology specialist, and this has allowed us to schedule weekly media technology classes for all students K through two. This has allowed her to resume Project Lead the Way modules within the technology classrooms. All students K through two are utilizing the iReady program. This program provides students with an individual path for growth in both reading and mathematics. Grade-level leaders and principals recently took part in additional iReady training to support our extended use. We are pleased that students are able to perform our annual holiday show, which will be taped and shared with families to view at home. The fire department safety program was held in October to educate students on fire safety. We are thrilled to host the Auburn High School Musical Department as they entertain our students during our outdoor recess in the coming days. Thank you for the generosity our families showed in stocking the shelves of the food pantry at the Auburn Youth and Family Service, as well as sharing candy and cards for our veterans. I, along with Mrs. Stanek, meet weekly with our newly-added clinical social worker and school counselors to discuss student and staff needs. One way we support the social and emotional needs of identified students is to provide Art for the Heart, which is run by our clinical social worker and our art specialist. The safety of our students and staff is a top priority throughout the district. Therefore, we continue to review the Alice techniques for all staff. Along with our safety team, we thoroughly review practices on a regular basis and make changes as needed to ensure we are well-equipped for any and all emergencies. We plan to continue to provide opportunities for teaching staff to discuss incoming students to support smooth transitions. All families at each grade level receive welcome videos for viewing at home. Prior to the start of school, we hosted a student open house, allowing a sneak peek of their classrooms, as well as an opportunity for families to say hello to their teachers. To ensure smooth transitions for all students, staff, and families, we will lean on grade-level leaders to review, discuss, and enhance all transition opportunities. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Jennifer Stanek, the principal of Ampechog Elementary.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for your ongoing support. I would like to share our vision for next school year with all of you. We look forward to implementing a comprehensive plan for the adoption of Universal Design for Learning to allow continued expansion of inclusive strategies for all students. Additionally, we will take advantage of utilizing our building coaches to support teaching staff as we increase our UDL practices and expectations. As we are always seeking ways to improve what we, improve what we provide our students, we will review current English language arts, as well as math programming, to ensure high-quality curriculum for all students. We are currently working on our UDL-tiered system. As we move into next school As we move into next school year, we look to review and utilize our tiered system with all staff. We are blessed to be a one-to-one iPad district. However, we need to continue to look at the balance and effectiveness of our technology usage in all areas. During our weekly technology classes, through the implementation of Project Lead the Way, we will ensure continued STEM program. In partnership with the safety teams, we will establish updated health and safety protocols in order for volunteers and community partners to join us in person if mask-wearing and social distancing continue. We look forward to welcoming volunteers back into our buildings in the future as they play a vital role in our school communities. Some opportunities we would like to reestablish include visiting the elderly in our community, visiting the Auburn Public Library, hosting community representatives in school, hosting the Officer Phil Program, and the Auburn Police Safety Program. As we congratulate Sergeant Kennedy on his new role with the Auburn Police, we look forward to establishing a strong working relationship with a newly-appointed school safety officer. Mrs. Mahan and I, I look to provide opportunities for our nurses to share preventative health lessons for our students, which may include dental health, germ awareness, hand washing, and nutrition. As safety is always a top priority, we will continue to schedule building reviews with the safety team, grade-level leaders, and all staff at various times throughout the school year to review ALICE techniques and building specific concerns. Together, we will review and update all necessary COVID protocols as established by the CDC, Department of Education, Board of Health, Auburn Leadership, and building teams. We will lean on our grade-level leaders to explore ways to welcome new families, as well as plan and refine current transition plans. I, along with Mrs. Mahan, will continue to review our plans with all stakeholders, which includes students, staff, and families, to promote cultural proficiency and diversity within our transition opportunities. As you review the Packerchog and Bryn Mawr school budget, please note that both are level-funded, excuse me, with the exception of the principal's dues line item in order to cover the cost of the Project Lead the Way membership fees. Additionally, there is an increase in the custodial line item for both buildings due to the rise of cost of materials and need for supply. In closing, I want to thank you again for your continued support, which enables us to provide our students and families with Auburn excellence. Mrs. Mahan and I are happy to answer any questions you may have for us at this time.
Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Thank you, Mrs. Stanek. Next up is Dr. Lopez from Swanson Road Intermediate.
Good evening, everyone. Great to be here and see everyone. A pleasure to be able to share some of what I anticipate will be accomplishments this year, as well as provide a few of what I should see in, or we should see in 2023. In teaching and learning this year, we've been able to establish, and I think you heard it referenced from Dr. Chamberlain, as well as Mrs. Reedy, the Bright Intervention Classroom at the elementary level. Similar to Auburn Middle and Auburn High School, this program has really, it serves a very unique way to address some of the increasing mental health needs of our students in a very holistic, child-based team approach. The overarching goal of this program is really to help students acquire the skills to better be able to access higher-level functions so that they perform better in their classroom, attend to their academics and their tasks, self-regulate, and learn to generalize those skills throughout their school day and beyond. Another focus, as well as for the district at large, is to introduce the UDL, or Universal Design for Learning, at Swanson. This year's professional development really centers around all of the learning and the aspects of this style of teaching and learning. The professional development will give the students an equal opportunity to succeed. The approach really teaches, teaching and learning offers flexibility in the way students learn, as well as how they show what they know. By the end of the year, we will have a comprehensive implementation plan going into 2023 to begin to implement those skills, the tools, the strategies collectively as a school community. Another accomplishment by the end of this year will be to use the professional development that has been both online and in person to expand cultural proficiency. I think you'll find this as a trend, which I guess is, speaks to the consistency across the district. But through our professional learning communities, grade levels, and individual teams, we'll begin or continue to review curriculum to ensure that all of our students are represented and lessons really embody the diversity that enriches our schools and our school community. In terms of technology, this continues to be a focus this year specifically to build digital citizenship and digital responsibility, the appropriate use of technology as well. After coming out of the past two years, we know our students are quite savvy and have a great knowledge base, but also remembering that developmentally they need supports. So understanding that students require a breadth and depth of knowledge of the tools at hand, we're also addressing the type of technology platforms that students have access to, both at school as well as at home. This includes social media as well as video access. During STEM tech class, some time is dedicated to review and explicitly teach the responsible uses of this tool. We also elicited the support of District Attorney's Office to provide student cyber safety presentations and reinforce the importance of utilizing and navigating these platforms in a developmentally appropriate manner. On that same vein, teachers continue to use and refine the skills that have been learned over the past year and a half to strengthen those in the classroom and with the academic content. We've streamlined the type, we've streamlined the types of assignments online, along with the use of the tools for interventions, for practice, and extension. In the area of community partnerships, believe it or not, our school partnerships still are in play, which is great. They haven't diminished, they've morphed a bit, but something a little different, I dare say. I've been strengthened with many of our partners through all of this and speaking with them and coordinating with them. Teachers have also tailored and streamlined their communications to parents through different classroom teacher apps, providing ongoing and quick updates and opportunities to see class pictures quickly, snapshots through texts, text apps, classroom happenings, and celebrating student successes. One of the greatest strengths in building community has been seen and realized through our community service learning projects. Those are near and dear to my heart and our school community's heart. There've been a few this fall, and I'm hopeful that these projects continue to occur. The benefits of these, as you know or may be aware of, is not only the materialness of the organization that we're supporting, but the positive impact it has on the culture of the school, as well as the personal impact it has on students and their ability to learn about, respond to, and witness others in need. There've been such things as the candy drives for veterans, pajama drives for homeless children. We raised an incredible amount of money this year for our international community service project, Pride and Purpose. And on a side note, I've recently been meeting with a few students regarding a green initiative that they've come up with. They've seen a need, so they wrote to me, and I told them we'll talk about it, so stay tuned on that. Additionally, we found some innovative ways to engage the community, given the restrictions that we have in place, where we've welcomed back families and students and outdoor events. We still rely on Zoom to try to keep parents engaged and our community engaged. We've been able to have assemblies, celebrate successes, have offered parents and community members opportunities to engage with us on particular topics via Zoom. And we'll continue to work with the Auburn Fire Department, the Auburn Police Department, AYFS, our local businesses as well, all of whom have been so incredibly supportive throughout everything and have provided our students and teachers all kinds of opportunities to share experiences together. We've gotten pretty creative in doing this, so that continues. Under the goals of health, wellness, and safety, we've continued to provide the community updates of health and safety protocols for our students, working with central office, our nursing department, Board of Health. We continue to make sure that we have the students' health at the forefront and that we're moving forward in a, in a positive direction. On a slightly different front, our clinical staff and counselors have really thoughtfully crafted lessons over the course of this year and over the summer to make sure that students are not only engaged academically, but are socially emotionally making gains and providing those social skills and self-regulation, self-advocacy skills that they need to be successful as they mature in age going through Swanson. Using some of these tiered interventions, the instruction that has been occurring, we've been able to address the health, wellness, and safety as grade levels, as well as small groups, looking at the specific needs of students. Finally, in the area of transitions, we've been able to meet as teams, schools, and various staffs via Zoom, as well as face-to-face, to discuss pertinent items, whether it's student progress, families in need, professional development, or just sharing expertise and peer collaboration. This has been ongoing and just ensures that continuity within and between our schools. Finally, looking at teacher-made and student-made videos, this has become second nature. We try to share those out when we can. They are ongoing within our classrooms and throughout our school community. Transitions, however, can be seen in many areas, not only grade to grade, but this year particularly looking at how students are transitioning just within the building and having those connections and developing those relationships with multiple adults and multiple teachers and specialists and support staff. So that's truly been an important part of this year in transitioning to the whole school returning in person, certainly has been unique. So looking forward into 2023, we seek to really look at and refine our Bright Classroom to make sure that we are using the process and supports for the students that need this. Looking at the practices for Universal Design for Learning and implementing those practices, having had that learning occur this year. Also looking at scheduling options so that students have that wind block or what I need intervention to really target areas in ELA and math that may need more support or enrichment and extensions. Finally, looking at strengthening our Tier One instruction to really focus on those power standards to make sure that those students are getting our Tier One instruction to the best of and accessing to the most critical parts of our curriculum and standards. In technology, as Mr. Bupiera alluded to, we're looking at making sure once those servers get in, we have our Wi-Fi up and running. I'm hoping it doesn't take to 2023, but there's always some things to be done. The continued use of Zoom and Google Classroom, as well as Class Tag in our regular platforms at Swanson. And also look at trying to take our projects in community service learning and bridge that to the media and have a more sophisticated way of sharing that with the public. In community partnerships, continue and to seek and research ways to have culturally proficient communication, as well as events to really engage all of our families in the diversity that we have. And also reestablish and expand parent involvement, our PBIS, enrichment, and community celebrations, and really get our community back together with parents, families, and students. Regarding health, wellness, and safety, we're looking at the impact and refining our impact of having our school counselors and the mental health supports that need to be in place and refine those connections, along with the Bright Transitions, so both to Bright and transitioning out of Bright, to make sure that that's, that connection is being made. Also, ongoing work with the facilities manager, our facilities teams, our safety teams, and our trauma-informed practices. With transitions, again, depending on situation, we've seen to found some interesting ways of connecting virtually, but even looking at those, trying to find a more dynamic approach. If we don't have to do screen time, I'm welcoming all back into our building and looking at student needs and really making sure those transitions from Bryn Mawr and Packerchog to Swanson, as well as Swanson to AMS are seamless as possible, and all the information is shared to make sure our students are set up for success. And finally, look at increasing opportunities for students to interact with peers more so, both in different classrooms and finding unique ways to do that, as well as cross-schools to provide some mentoring opportunities, both up and down with the middle school as well as the primary schools. In terms of the budget, it is level-funded. Other than the line of classroom supplies, we have had a number of student move-ins and just looking at inflation and other needs that may be forthcoming in terms of supplies in the classroom and student need, that's the only one that has slight increase. And I'd like to just end by saying it's a pleasure being here and seeing everyone, and thank you so much for all the support that has been ongoing and continues.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Lopez? Seeing none.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez, very much. Next up is Mr. Greg Adesto from the Auburn Middle School. I haven't seen him, but I'm sure he's out there.
I'm here, Dr. Handfield.
Oh, there he is, okay. You've been unusually quiet tonight.
I get a sense you might have been hoping I wasn't here.
No, I just, I hadn't heard you, that's all. I usually hear you.
I'm just kidding. So, good evening, everybody, and I just want to say, first of all, as Susan said, it's great to see everybody together, and it's, I'm trying to think about how I wanted to start this. There's something that I really have been wanting to say, which is this, it's, I'm not a rookie, okay? Been doing this for a long time, but I feel like a rookie the past couple of years, I think we all do. It's like what they say when a kid goes from college to the National Football League as a quarterback, the game just moves faster and it's difficult to adjust. I feel like the game's moving faster this year than it's ever moved before, and I agree with Dr. Handfield that this year may be even more challenging than last. Where I, where I want to spin this, though, is this, I feel like it's this, the game is difficult for everybody right now in the whole world, probably, and I think that here in Auburn, Massachusetts, thanks to the resources that this school committee and leadership, Dr. Handfield and Dr. Chamberlain have provided us to work with, they've given us all the tools to make it happen this year for our kids, and I want to thank you all for that. That's not, it's not like this everywhere. Our kids' needs have increased, and as they have, you've allowed us to have more resources, and we're very grateful for that. I'll touch on that very briefly later on in more specifics. But I know your job is hard, too, and I know that you don't always get the credit you deserve, and, but we are grateful, and we do talk about that behind the scenes, just so you know. I'm just going to hit some of the highlights that are on my slides, some of the things that I'm, we're working on, some of the things that we're really proud of. And the slides, of course, every principal would say the same, are just a really small sampling of some of the things that go on in our schools that we're really proud of. So to begin under teaching and learning with things that we're currently working on and that have been accomplished over the course of the past year as well, we're really proud that our students are receiving an education that's well-rounded and really a middle-school education. It's very tempting right now to put your young teenagers in one classroom and don't let them rotate their schedule the way they, they should, but we haven't done that. We've taken the care and the, and the time and the energy to allow them to have a schedule similar to what they had two years ago. And I see that it's making a difference with the students. As Dan said earlier, we see that they're extraordinarily excited to be back in school. Maybe not about doing schoolwork, but getting back in school and to be getting back into the routine of things. With that in mind, we also, you know, the Universal Design for Learning Initiative is something that we are all diving into in each of our schools, and we've made a decision in my school to really try to master one, at least one element of it this year and get really good at it, because it is a challenging year in so many ways. And so rather than try to do it all at once, we're trying to implement one particular element of that and get really good at it, and that is letting the students choose the way in which they want to learn the material. So that goes back to, they're excited to be back in school, but not always about doing the work. But if they're doing a unit, for example, on the American Revolution, and they have a choice of writing a paper, taking a test, giving a speech, acting out a scene, or whatever it is that they feel good about, how they can show their knowledge, we're trying to get better at that this year and then moving forward with it more, even more next year. For all that our students missed the past couple of years, one thing that they haven't missed out on is technology, and they have been, you know, active, to say the least, on social media and email and things of that nature. So we're trying to be really thoughtful about the way that we educate them more on So we're trying to be really thoughtful about the way that we educate them more on the safe and ethical use of technology. Specifically, right now, we are doing a little bit of work relative to social media, how to be an appropriate citizen on social media, how to properly email, do formal emails, and also the reliability of sources, whereas, so if you have to look up something for one of your classes, there's a difference between seeing it on Instagram and seeing it in, for example, a university-published paper. And we're trying to help them understand what's good information and what's not in an academic setting. This is, again, with our two new social workers, one of whom is in the mental health component of the Bright program, the other of whom is just a social worker who sees a quite large caseload of students, that has really been a godsend to us, that additional support. And so I'm really proud of my entire student support team, but having those additional resources have been tremendously helpful, and I want to be sure to specifically thank you again for that. Our Bright program is now in its second official year, really like in its third year, and it's, we have two components of it. One is more of an academic component and one is more of a mental health. The academic is flourishing, and we're still figuring our way with the mental health component, but it's been really helpful for a lot of kids, and it's getting better every day, so we're grateful for that. Last thing that I want to mention that's on my slides is the educational programming to reduce out-of-school suspensions. We're kind of excited about this, and I have to give credit to Matt Carlson, my assistant principal, for doing a lot of research on this. We had a couple of suspensions early in the year for behaviors that were, you know, not as they should be, just so I'll say. And we realized right then that if our students are in a tough spot as far as their social skills right now, we can't just keep on suspending people from school. They've already missed a lot of school. And so Matt did a lot of research, and the past couple of times we've had to do what would have historically been a long suspension, it's been a shorter suspension followed by a parent meeting and then an educational program. And I feel like it's really made a big difference, and we're excited about where this can go in the future. Relative to what we hope to expand upon into next year, I'll just mention a couple of things because I know I'm getting wrong here as far as my time. We want to just kind of be a little bit more deliberate in delivering our instruction on social media-specific topics next year in some of our courses, specifically in media research class, which all three grade levels have, in our health class in grade seven, and also in computer technology classes in grade six. As Susan mentioned earlier, the student-produced videos, we are still not there, I thought we would be here by now, but we're not, with our Welcome to Our World program, which is a student-made mini-video lessons for parents about what it's like to be a kid and what kinds of social media and other technological things they should be on the lookout for. We would like to reestablish our partnership with the Auburn Life Care Center, which for obvious reasons has not been able to keep going forward the past few years. We have continued our strong relationship with Auburn Youth and Family Services, but want to get back into the Life Care Center certainly by next year. And I'm utilizing the school council this year, which is meeting in person. I've got six parents on the council, and we have taken on the challenge of trying to create some in-person informational nights for parents that are safe to do, and we're working on a way to do that, because we really think we lose out on something when our parents can't come in the school and get a sense of what it feels like in the school. Zoom is just not the same thing, so we're working on that. And the last thing I'll say is just that we are continuously trying to improve the Bright program. It's a tremendous resource that we have in Auburn that a lot of districts around us don't have. When I mention it to my fellow principals in other districts, they don't even know what I'm talking about. They have no clue what it is that I'm mentioning. It's like I'm talking about chess and they're talking about checkers. And so we want to continue to use that resource appropriately for our students. And, you know, really proud of my staff, really proud of my students, the way they've responded. It's not easy, but I think, thanks to everybody's help here in Auburn, I think that we're doing better than most. And so thank you for listening to me, and I would certainly be happy to entertain any questions and do my best to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Desto?
No, thank you.
Mr. Desto, could you just, probably just an oversight on your part, the two new positions?
Oh, yeah, you're right. Yes, I certainly will, Dr. Handfield. Thank you for the reminder. I got so excited about all that other stuff.
I know, I know. It's okay. It happens.
So new positions that are within the budget currently are a one-to-one licensed practical nurse, which is a position that is required for a medically fragile student who will be returning from grade six, returning to school for grade six, and also the aforementioned .6 strings teacher, which would be required to continue strings instruction at the middle school level, and that had been presented earlier by the Fine Arts Department.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Desto.
Thank you.
Seeing no questions.
Mr. DeLong Champ, welcome back from Auburn High School.
Hi. So hello again. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you all for your support. As the new guy, it's truly a blessing to have the support and not only have the support, but feel the support of so many in the community. After 28, 29 years in education and pretty much almost having every, being in every role, I mean, as Dr. Handfield mentioned, this is really, really, really hard work. With that being said, I'm so proud of my team. I think they truly are doing tremendous work, day in and day out. It's almost like climbing Everest. I really feel that way sometimes, and if you guys saw me live, I'd have a hard time climbing Ward Hill, so. With that being said, you know, I'm really, you know, as Mr. Desto mentioned, you know, as I'm reading this, I'm like, wow, you know, it kind of shortchanged us, because it's really just not even necessarily a snapshot of exactly all of the wonderful things that are happening in our school. But I will say this, you know, people are working hard, people are digging deep to try to be as creative as possible to support kids. And every day I come in and somebody's telling, asking me about trying something different, trying something new, in an effort to see if they can make that connection, and that really makes a big deal. And if they even touch one student, if they can hit one student in regards, like making that connection, to me, that counts. So with that, we're doing a lot of work reestablishing our home base program, and this is to not only support academic, but also social-emotional growth. Really, it's just a place for students to make another connection with another adult. And to me, I feel like having that person for a longer period of time and being in a home base, and this is, a home base is what we call the 30-minute activity period and where students would go in with other members of their class, so they would have, you know, freshmen would be with freshmen. And we could work on, you know, age-appropriate, grade-appropriate curriculum, whether it be social-emotional or just academic strategies. Our, you know, Ms. Dunio, my assistant principal, my clinical team, my guidance team, my department chairs, we continue to dig deep and look at different ways to come up with interventions to support students who might be struggling in our current academic model. I think it's really, really hard. I think for some students, they were away from, they were away from in-person for 75 weeks, and to all of a sudden to show back up on our door and do real school again, it's been a little bit tough. So we've been working on ways to make that a bit easier. We're always reviewing our special education services, partnering with Ms. Reed, our special education team, in an effort to support our kids. We are taking a look at our other supports, including our enterprise program, to try to create the greatest web or net in order to support as many as possible. We're constantly reviewing and reflecting our past practices. We'll begin, you know, with trimester one just ended, we're going to take a look at what worked, what didn't, what we can do better, again, with the goal to build relationships first and then focus on climbing into the academic world. I really believe, after talking to my teachers who have in our math and English departments, that our freshmen have benefited from the slower pace, and this is, I say this because they will have three trimesters of English and math this year, and, you know, we've tried to highlight pace and reinforcement, and while at the same time trying to strengthen those skills that sometimes come with a little more time. We're, again, like I mentioned, we're reviewing our social-emotional learning strategies within our daily lessons in order to support kids. In regards to technology, we're all working on similar platforms, School G, Power School. And we'll say that, you know, if there was anything that we gained from the COVID experience, which was the increased repertoire of online and virtual supports that our teachers are still using, that Mr. Bouvier is still supporting, and it does help in the classroom. We have partnered with the district attorney's office. We did a virtual workshop on, to educate kids around safe use of technology and cyber-related situations that come up with teens. This is one of many conversations that will need to take place and has to be focused on with just the amount of screen time our kids have today. Community partnerships, we continue to work with Auburn Youth and Family Services in an effort to support our students. We, staff continues to send out positive notifications, positive emails to families to talk about individual successes in the classroom. We are working on continued exploration of an internship program for our seniors. I had a chance to go to a benefit with the Chamber of Commerce, where we were able to start to form some partnerships for future placements, I hope. Creation of a one-to-two-day job shadowing program for our juniors, so our juniors can gain some insight on potential career opportunities. Biweekly communication continues to go out to families to provide them updates with what's going on in our school. And I think, again, I'll go back to what I mentioned a half an hour ago in regards to athletics and fine arts. Our concert that we had, our live concert, I thought was fantastic, probably one of my highlights this year, just to see our community come back to support our kids in the auditorium and celebrate the arts. And then, pretty much on a nightly basis, you can see, you can see our community support our athletes. So those are all fantastic, all fantastic activities. Health, wellness, and safety, our diversity club continues to expose social justice. So that group of students that you all got a chance to meet at the end of last year left us with a five-year plan, and we have roughly about 30 students right now working on that five-year plan, doing some great things. I'm really excited about our partnership with CLE to look at the root causes of educational inequity and just overall to take a look at what we do at Auburn High School and try to improve our practices. Our continued review and implementation of our Bright Classroom, we're seeing some really great gains and successes with students who have had a variety of different struggles, and to see them succeed is truly going to highlight. Continued efforts on educating the student body on unsafe behaviors. So again, just like what I work with the DA, we're continually working with kids to inform, educate around drugs, alcohol, vaping, and dysfunctional relationships. In regards to where we're going, we're going to continue to work on teaching strategies that create well-structured lessons and engagement. Again, like I mentioned, we're going to continue to review our special education models to increase support. We're always looking, and we started to talk about our program of studies in an effort to meet the ever-changing career opportunities and world climate. Where technology, we're always looking for ways to incorporate technology into our lessons. In regards to Niasq, ongoing completion of our Niasq Up Report will be due at the end of this year, and then we are working on Division of the Graduate Report. Community partnerships, again, the internship program is a big undertaking, and that's going to take some time to build community partnerships to support roughly, you know, 160 placements. Again, I want to mention, and I didn't put this on my slides, but I have to say, you know, in regards to the work that we've done with our fire department and our police department, they have been outstanding supports to our student body in an effort to keep us safe, provide education. I can't say enough positives about everything they do to help our learning community. In regards to health, wellness, and safety, I mean, we're meeting monthly in regards to enhancing our Bright programs, and like I mentioned, we're working on trying to continue to modify and enhance our enterprise programming. We are trying to look at programming at this point in time to support students in an effort where we know that students are, they're on the screen so much outside of school hours, we're looking to teach them strategies in order to be able to support one another in positive ways and to be able to use the adults to support them. So we're looking into programming for that. And then, in addition, this spring, we're going to be looking to create a leadership group that will focus on gaining an understanding of their influence in the building to create a greater positive impact in our learning community. My hope is that this positive influence will spread in the building and we'll be able to support a really broad range of students. In regards to transitions, we continue to work with Mr. Desto in the middle school to improve and enhance orientation. My goal, my hope is that, you know, with COVID, that things settle down, where we can do more in-person things with them, whether it be outside or inside, in an effort to share all the wonderful things that are happening in Auburn High School with our upcoming classes. And then, we will also continue to send our leadership team to the middle school to meet with them and get a chance to get a head start before the next school year would begin. In regards to the budget numbers, there isn't really a lot of change. I think we'd modified office supplies a little bit. Due to COVID, we've reduced, and just with inflation, there were some subtle changes within the numbers, but overall, I think you'd see that most numbers are roughly the same. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has anybody for me, anything for me.
Any questions, Mr. DeLong Champ?
Nope, thank you very much.
Seeing none. Through the chair, Mr. DeLong Champ, you also have a one-to-one LPN potential, right? If you don't, you should.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I thought it was there, unless we're looking at the wrong stuff.
Listen, I got caught up on that whole, you introduced me as bringing up the rear tonight, and often turns out you like the rear.
My apologies.
So we do have a new position, and it's a one-to-one licensed practical nurse, and this is required for a medically fragile student.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on.
Yeah, so through the chair, you know, as you saw and heard this evening, over the last hour and a half, there's a lot of really good things going on in the Auburn Public Schools, and you didn't really hear COVID mentioned all that much. And so in spite of the challenges, and they are quite extensive, you know, in terms of educating in COVID times, there's a lot of really good things still going on in our school, so there's much to be proud of, and I thank the administrative team for their efforts and for putting together this presentation this evening. You know, clearly, we're still in a response and recovery mode. You know, our accomplishments are representative of our commitment, our continued commitment to rise from COVID stronger than we were before. As you saw, the classroom supply lines are level-funded for the most part. There's nothing there that's extravagant, and part of that is because, you know, we do have ample resources, you know, at our disposal, but also part of that is understanding the fiscal challenges that may lie before us. There are, just in summation, there are proposed positions discussed in this budget, the .6 strings position, the two assistant coaches for the fall and spring golf teams, the potential need for a preschool ABA, and then the two LPNs. January 5th, we will get back together and look at the second part of the budget that will be more number-heavy in terms of just, you know, the overall. of the budget. That will be more number-heavy in terms of just, you know, the overall costs in this draft for FY '23, but we will also discuss what we're using for offsets and projected enrollments and things of that nature. So you have all of that information at your disposal prior to making a recommendation for a number to send to the town. And then we'll, you'll vote to send that budget to the town January 5th. And then, it's, it becomes a bit of a waiting game, and it becomes a bit of a adjustment, I guess, situation, because, as I said at the outset this evening, we don't have a firm percentage from the town, whereas last year we did at the town's budget kickoff. Right now, things are, financially are very turbulent, and so the town has yet to come across with a firm number, but we continue to work with them. We met with them last week to identify clearly what our needs were and what they will be moving forward in the draft number, and they were very appreciative of the transparency. So I trust that we'll continue moving forward as we try to get to a place where we can come to some agreement, you know, on what the budget will be. But we're also waiting for the state. We don't know what the state's numbers are going to be. So it's trying to pin the tail on a running donkey right now. It's really challenging to try to come across with a number, you know, that makes any sense. But we'll continue to whittle, and, you know, as I often reference, an old colleague of ours, you know, it's a long way to May. It's a long way to May, meaning it's a long way to May Town Meeting, to when we bring the budget to Town Meeting Floor, seeking approval. So we have a ways to go, but I think, as you saw this evening, we're doing a lot of really great things, and just really proud of the work going on in the schools. So with that, thank you, everyone out there. You can sign off. I wish you all a good night. I'm sure we'll be talking in less than 12 hours tomorrow.
Good night.
Good night. It's just the way it rolls.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
You too.
So that would, Mr. Chair, that will, that will close out the part, the first part of the budget kickoff. There is no teaching and learning. Mrs. Wizbicki, Cecilia, you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening. How are you?
Good. I apologize for not being present in the meeting, but hello, everyone. I wanted to bring to your attention tonight, we've received several grants, and I just, I'm looking for approval for them. Let me go over briefly what they are. I know we've previously mentioned the ESSR III grant. Auburn Public Schools has officially been approved for the federal ESSR III grant, and the amount is $1,411,780. As part of the American Recovery Plan Act, the grant is to be used to continue with the salaries of the counselors and social workers in addressing social-emotional needs of our students, which many of the principals had spoken with regard to, that they find them very helpful, the support of the student's social-emotional needs, as well as a teacher and support staff to continue to address the learning losses related to the pandemic. Funds will also be used for summer school funding to continue to address learning loss, and a small amount of staff professional development. And then the remainder of the grant, which we had originally put in for, to be used for a capital project for HVAC, we have switched it over to be used to update the corporate elementary math and literacy curriculums for the district. So that'll be that grant, and we are looking for your approval of that.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion to accept the federal ESSR III, the third grant, as presented by the business manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote. Did you have a discussion?
I was just going to say, I'm sure glad Cecilia's here tonight. You almost missed her.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Auburn Public Schools has also been approved for the FY '22 COVID-19 Summer Programming Reimbursement Grant, in the amount of $50,000, which Dr. Chamberlain applied for submitting actual expenses utilized this past summer for programming. It was a grant opportunity that came available, and so we were able to use some of the expenses that we had charged to other grants and applied for this grant. So it's a reimbursement grant. So it'll, we'll be journaling over monies to this grant from expenses that we've already expensed. So I'm looking for your approval for that as well.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept the FY 2022 COVID-19 Summer Programming Reimbursement Grant, as presented by the business manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Beth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote.
Thank you. All districts in Massachusetts also received federal monies related to the administrative costs for EBT work in their districts during the pandemic and continuing. There was a, there were programming set up for EBT cards for families in need, and Cecile Luftstedt, our assistant to the food service manager, had done a lot of work on that along with, along with our administration. And so we wanted to, we were approved for the amount of $3,070, and it's also a reimbursement grant as well. And I'm just looking for your approval for that.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept the federal grant for EBT administrative costs, as presented by the business manager.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote.
Major David Broder Memorial Foundation grant has been awarded to Amanda Green for her Wellness Wednesdays Initiative, which is geared to the primary schools and will enhance the school day by enabling students to take part in structured yoga and mindfulness lessons during PE classes and adaptive PE classes. The amount of the grant was for $400, and I'm looking for your acceptance of that.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude the grant awarded to Amanda Green from the Major David Broder Memorial Foundation in the amount of $400.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Nope, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote.
Can we thank Amanda Green for applying for that grant? The next one, the Auburn Chamber of Commerce has once again awarded their Chamber Mini Grants for a grant total of $1,232.50 to the following Auburn staff members for projects they've submitted consideration. I'd like, you know, also to take a moment to thank these, I'll list them out, but these teachers who and staff that have stepped forward. This is in addition to their regular teaching duties and duties that they do every day, that they've reached out to try to better the classrooms and do things for their students, which is great. Don Funicchio from Bryn Mawr School with a project called Books and Beyond, Amanda Green from Bryn Mawr School for Wellness Wednesdays, to add on to her grant that she's already received from Major Broder, Carrie LaBretton, Bryn Mawr School, "I Pets Aren't Everything," April Busan, Bryn Mawr School, "What Zone Are You In?", Julie Benoit from Packard Shop School, Books and Beyond, and Alisa Milamir from Packard Shop School, "Pop-In Numbers." So I just ask that you accept the Chamber Mini Grants as presented.
I'd entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude the Chamber Mini Grants totaling $1,232.50 as presented by the business manager.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then also, also in your packet, I provided a year-to-date budget report for your information dated December 8th. And with that, I also have budget transfers, a listing of budget transfers between same series for your information, along with a listing of transfers between different series, for which I'm just seeking your approval.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the list of transfers dated December 8th, as presented by the business manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That's the end of my report, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Bye, Cecilia.
Thank you.
Hi.
Good night, Cecilia.
Bye.
Best wishes, everyone.
Same to you. Glad you made it.
We know.
Is there anything else, Dr. Handfield?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair. I think that covers it for this evening.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.